So let's go ahead and get started. Calls are ordered. Stephanie?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
John?
Here.
Nate?
Here.
Pleasure to meet you.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Doug called in, he wasn't able to come in tonight, so he's excused, and Travis, same story, unable to attend tonight. So there's four of us council members, so we have an appropriate forum. Item three, consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stephanie?
Aye.
Thank you, sorry. Public input, item four. This is the time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Anybody want to take advantage of that?
I would, if you have just a second. I'm Anne O'Katz.
Thank you.
And I recently read in the Sun newspaper that Lisbon has received the first installment of its, of the funds distributed through the American Rescue Plan. And I'm curious about how the city plans to engage the community in the allocation of those funds. Has there been any discussion about that? And the second part of my question relates to the distribution of these funds at county level. I'm curious about whether or not somebody from city council or somebody from the city staff is participating in those discussions at the county level.
I don't have any information on that subject. Brandon, do you have anything?
I'm actually going to the LEED conference on Thursday, and that is a workshop session on that. So I'm going to be learning from there. And I have reached out to the county. Keep in mind that not all cities have received this money. It's come at different times. So we're pretty early in the stages as well, so.
In the LEEDs conference, Brandon, is the, or the LEED, is that what it is? L-E-E-D?
No, it's the League of Cities.
Oh, League of Cities. I'm sorry, I didn't understand you. Is that a conference in Des Moines, or is it in Cedar Rapids?
This year it's in Corvillo on Thursday.
Oh, okay. Are they making any of those sessions available to the general public, or is that just, is that your annual training?
Yeah, that's the annual LEED conference for all the elected officials and city administrators.
Oh, okay, okay. And is that an agenda item?
No, it's just a workshop, just talking.
No, I'm sorry. The American Rescue Plan, is that an agenda item? Will there be a session on that?
At your LEED meeting, are you going to discuss that?
At the LEED meeting. Is that, is that an agenda?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay. So then it's likely that this will become an agenda item for a city council meeting sometime in the future?
I don't think, if you have some sort of power, absolutely.
I, I, Anne, I think, yeah, we just learned about this recovery fund last meeting. So...
No, I under, I understand. But there's been a lot of conversation, and there's been a lot of news coverage about the American Rescue Plan. And I was just curious about how the city of Lisbon was planning to involve its community members in that discussion at the city level. And maybe that's something that Brandon will learn when he's at that meeting on Thursday of this week. I understand that this is all, all brand new. But it's best to get on these things sooner rather than later.
In our packet for today's meeting, there is a flyer about the American Rescue Fund plan. So we can get information on that, and we can certainly add it to a future agenda for a future council meeting.
Sure, that's great, that's great. That was my question, thank you.
Alrighty. Anything else? Alright, we'll move on. 5A, discussion and possible action in reference to barns at Myers Farm. There's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I had met with Anne and Becky, and they had the preservation report done from the structural engineer at the Blue and Coyote that I shared with you guys previously. I had seeked out a couple local contractors to submit bids. We did get one estimated quote from a local contractor. The information that I gave him was the whole report, however, Historic Preservation Committee requested that it be scaled down a bit. So as I said last meeting, we, they redid the bid after meeting with Becky and Anne. So you can see the report in your packet as to the different, each barn. And I'll just go through there so everybody's on the same page. The hay barn is the north barn. The middle barn would be the one with the silo, and then what they call like the corner crib would be the south barn next to South Street. So I know that I put in this packet originally, it looked like the middle barn was going to be the most, the cheapest route. But after meeting with Becky and Anne, it's my understanding that the bid come in a little bit higher on the middle barn, and a little bit less on the north barn after this was revised. So the north barn looks like it's only going to cost $7,000 to do that first initial phase of stabilization. And again, this is an estimate. Kurt Blanks is the one who did the bid through Blanks Brothers, he's here tonight. But it would be my recommendation to start on that barn. And then I would also like to have a work session with council, and invite Historic Preservation to that as well, to discuss, you know, moving forward from there. I did talk to Kurt about this. He said he can start this around November 1st. This is his goal. If he can get here sooner, he will. So that would give us a little bit of time to discuss in a work session, the future of the barns and the timeline and all that stuff.
Okay. When, what are we thinking for a work session? Do you need time? Do we want to put that on a couple of weeks? Do you want to do it next week? Is Anne still on?
Anne, do you want to discuss this at your Historic Preservation meeting and come back with a date, or do you want us to just set one for Monday night and off council meeting night?
Yeah, unfortunately, Becky just sent me a text. She said she's not able to join the Zoom meeting, she can't get on. So I told her to run over there, so you see her pop through the door.
Okay.
It would be good to have her there. Kurt and Mark Moon and Becky Hess met, and they discussed the revised quote received from Blanks Brothers. And that quote, just for point, a point of clarification, basically covers the immediate needs that are outlined in Todd Burkle's report. So when Brandon was talking about scaling back, we're actually talking about focusing in on the immediate needs. And I was not able to participate in the meeting with Mark and Becky and Kurt last week, so I don't know the details of that. But our commission meets on Thursday of this week, and we would be happy to include this as an agenda item, if, if that's how you want to move forward. Just to ask the question though, Brandon, which, which structure are you proposing that we start with?
This would be the north structure, the hay barn feeder.
The hay barn?
This would be north of the silo, or kind of north of what it was.
So it's the, it's the one that has the, that needs the least amount of work, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, so what you'd like us to do then is discuss a timetable for moving forward with stabilizing the other two structures?
I would just like if you guys could, I want to have you guys present at the workshop, so I'd like you to come up with a date that works for you guys to attend.
Okay.
Or if we can set that now, that would be great, or I can just be in contact with you, we can set that up. But I think it's important to often have a little bit more time than just a council meeting to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, understandably. That would be an evening meeting?
Yeah, probably, yeah.
And next week sometime? Okay. Brandon, can I work with you on scheduling that?
Sure.
Okay.
Like tentatively next Monday?
Yeah, I think next Monday. I'd like to keep...
Anne, can we tentatively schedule it for next Monday?
I don't see that that would be a problem.
At seven? Okay? Be good.
Yep. And then just so that you guys all know, I leave the 22nd, won't be back until the first of the month. The 22nd is a Wednesday, so that Monday night would be fine.
You would be here for a Monday, okay.
Yeah, but if something comes back and we can't do it Monday or something, it would need to be Tuesday, because I, or I mean, or else I won't be there, and that's fine. I'm just letting you guys know.
Okay. We'd certainly like you to be there and be involved. So tentatively, Monday, the 20th at 7:00 PM, right here.
Okay. Okay.
And if that can happen with your organization, and yep, get her posted and let us know.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Anne.
And I'll be on lockdown then, so I can actually come in for meetings while.
That would be great, too. Any other discussion on the Myers, Myers Farm? Do you need a motion to move ahead with it?
Yeah, I would like, keep in mind, this is an estimated quote. There's going to be things that he's going to find that probably need fixed, and there's maybe some things that aren't quite as bad as maybe you thought. So Kurt, do you have anything you want to add, or?
Well, no, I, I, like, like we say though, if, if we're working over there, we see something that we think needs to be repaired and not just gone around because it didn't say, hey, this needs to be fixed, then we're going to fix it, you know? We're gonna, we're gonna make them structurally sound, is what we're trying to accomplish anyway, so.
Yeah, this, this first phase is structurally sound, so the weather, tear them down or tear them up.
I mean, it's, it's not something that everybody can just say, oh, hey, here's what we got to fix. There will be some things in there that we'll see. I don't think there's anything major, but if it needs to be repaired, needs to be repaired.
You guys, I'm just thinking out loud, but maybe we just have this as an agenda item on, on the meeting for Monday, and maybe Curtis could be there as well Monday on the 20th, and then that way, everybody would kind of be on the same page as what the plan is. And we could always approve this Monday night, if he's not going to start until November 1st anyway. We could approve it Monday night after we've kind of all talked about it, so that we know for sure that this is where we want to start.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happier with that plan.
I, I, I agree. I think that...
As long as it doesn't set Kurt's back at all.
Yeah, no, he's, he's talking about November 1st, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, thanks to us knowing we're going to, you know, have you start, but let's just make sure that that's where everybody wants to start.
I, I think one of the first things I'd like to see is the holes in the roof covered over. Doesn't look bad. It looks bad for the public, how that hole is open for over a year. Why aren't we fixing it? That's what some have asked me, so. But otherwise, which we start on, for a lot of the things, I don't really care. As long as we get started.
Alright, well then we're going to defer any action on 5A until next Monday. You're going to have to add an agenda item to, for us to act upon. And is there anything else? Let's move on.
Curtis, would you be able to be there Monday night, please?
Yeah, I can be here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McMillan's in the room, too, and he said he could make that meeting as well.
Perfect, perfect.
Wonderful. Alrighty. Thank you on that. We'll move on to 5B, discussion and possible action on purchasing sampler or wastewater.
So we talked about this last meeting. The quote I got, and when we went in to order it, like we talked we were going to do, was about $2,200 more. I can't justify paying $2,200 more because of shipping errors. So what we're going to do is we're going to, we're going to continue sampling like we are, which is exactly what we're supposed to be doing. And we're going to hopefully hope prices start to come back to reality with the sampler. So I'm keeping you updated. So if you see it come back up, it's not that it went bad, it's we just never bought it, and so.
It went up $2,200 from what?
So it went from like 50, it was like 53 or 56, and 74 and change.
Okay.
And I just, I'm not going to pay that much money for, for something that I...
Alright, appreciate your full responsibility, sounds good. Alright, so we'll move on to 5C, discussion and possible action regarding Halloween Town. Drake, I think, do you up, or?
Yeah, I could start. So Brandon and I thought this way, well, Brandon wanted to get this on the agenda in front of you guys, we had some...
I can't hear him.
Yeah, come on, come on, alright.
Haven't you heard enough?
I haven't seen much of him in the last two weeks.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
So Brandon and I discussed this a little bit, and wanted to get it put on the agenda. Just kind of want to hear what your guys' thoughts are on this. It's our biggest event that we put on, and last year, obviously, we canceled it due to COVID. I will tell you that some of the big people in this that make it happen are not too comfortable with doing it this year. So if this is something that we want to do, I'm going to need to know as soon as possible. That way, I can get plenty of volunteers to make this happen, because there's a lot of time that goes into it. And I just want to make sure that I have enough time to get more volunteers than what I already have, because I think, I think three of the five people on my committee as of right now are not planning to take part in it. So I just wanted to get it in front of you guys and see what you thought. I know the cases and stuff like that, I mean, I just kind of want to hear what you guys think about it, so.
Yeah, I understand the apprehension that your help has expressed, and...
And I get it, too.
Yeah, I mean, we, I don't know if we've seen the full effect of the Delta variant and the resurgence in cases that have come along. I know the kids like this event, I know, you know, skipping it last year, we are all hoping for this kind of thing, but I really, I don't want to see us jeopardizing one's safety. And I, it's a long ways until,
yeah.
Until, until, you know, October 30th or whatever year.
Maybe it's something that we just do, a kind of a shortened version of what we've done in the past, and I don't know if that's the right answer or not. But I, it's our biggest event. I mean, you guys have been down there before, you see how packed the downtown is. I mean, I'll, I'll do what you guys want me to do, but I just wanted to see what you guys thought on it, so.
I'm, I'm on the fence with it.
Well, as layers onto Southeastland and the library, Southeastland isn't planning at this point in time a soup supper inside.
Yep.
The library isn't planning anything inside, possibly would participate in something outside. I think they're still going to allow costume checkouts like they do books. And other than that, it would be strictly outside if they do it, that's what the library...
I think, I mean, the kids are in school, right, and I get that, but you're, you're literally putting hundreds of people in a two-block radius of each other for several hours at a time. And I think last year, Drayton, so a couple of things come to mind that I think maybe would be good options for another year, knowing that eventually we're going to get back to Halloween Town. But last year, you guys bought all those pumpkins, and the kids could sign up and come get a free pumpkin, and I thought that that was really nice. And then you guys also kind of did like the scavenger hunt thing, where you put together some goody bags, prizes, and on Facebook, there was a like clue of the day or something, or something for them to do, and the kids could go do it, and then submit it, and then they could win a prize.
Yep.
And I almost kind of think that we should probably try that for one more year, until we really get a handle on everything.
What is your volunteer, I mean, your remaining volunteer force, can they handle these kinds of suggestions?
Well, if we're going to do something like this, I can get, my, my parking wreck board, I've already been involved in the Halloween Town, but if we're going to do something like this, then we, that's something that we did last year, we can handle that.
Okay.
If that's what, if that's the way you guys want to go, I mean, I can sit down, I have a meeting Monday, I can discuss it with them. I wanted to hear from you guys first before I took it to them.
Yeah.
But I can discuss it with them and see what kind of ideas we can come up with, and either bring them back to you guys at the next meeting, or shoot them to you in an email.
Okay. I'm, I'm not a giant fan of creating a super spreader event, if that's what it would be, for 200 people, you know, I spent all day Sunday watching huge super spreader events with, you know, in Kansas City and Chicago, Chicago, wherever they are. They were in LA, beautiful state. So a lot of time before that thing happens, I liked Stephanie's suggestion of trying to do something that still is going to promote social distancing, and yet be fun for the kids, so we can come back strong next year, hopefully.
And obviously, no matter what, we're still going to decorate the downtown and stuff like that. So it's not like it's just going to be a bear downtown, and there isn't going to be anything down there. But as far as you guys, I don't know what your plan is for trick-or-treating or anything like that, maybe that'll be on a different agenda.
Now, trick-or-treating can turn into a different subject, because you have the option whether or not you want to go, and you have the option of whether or not you want your home to participate. You know, we're downtown, we, we are going to be relying on, I mean, we're going to be basically forcing business owners to participate downtown. We're going to be forcing volunteers, because sometimes even kids from Kirkwood come over and help with those, run some of the games, or not Kirkwood, I'm sorry, Cornell, run some of the games and stuff like that. And it takes just a lot more to, to do that. Also, we, we can't stop everybody from putting themselves in a position where they could potentially expose somebody else, or, but as a city, I think we're kind of obligated to take responsibility for our own stuff. And that's what I feel like Halloween Town is.
Sarah, do you have anything to add?
I, I say we, we should probably do something else besides, right? The super spreader thing just doesn't go over well with me, in my gut feeling.
Do you like the suggestions that...
I, oh, I, I love what they did last year. First of all, it was Facebook related, that everybody's on, there was a lot, you had a lot of, there was a lot of interaction with that. The other thing that I was possibly thinking was letting, obviously, kids can trick-or-treat at businesses, I mean, if they chose to, if we had trick-or-treating, and that would just allow the businesses to be involved if they choose to. Nothing, you know, no games or anything downtown, but, you know, I, I think that maybe letting the businesses, if kids wanted to trick-or-treat there, we, we give a list of businesses that would be participating, so the kids could go in, but it would be all the businesses up to the business as well.
I think, too, in trick-or-treating, they're going to be spread out across, I mean, if we don't do anything downtown, they're going to be spread off, spread out across town.
Yep.
You're not going to have everybody cramped in one spot for three hours.
There was trick-or-treating last year, was there not? We did have trick-or-treating last year.
Yeah, there was trick-or-treating last year.
Yep. So I think, and maybe if we just let the businesses know, hey, we're not doing Halloween Town, but if you would like to, you put it on the list, that will provide to everyone that you can trick-or-treat at that business.
Do we still walk off the streets?
I don't think so.
No.
Nope.
I think the businesses could just turn their lights on if they want to, when the kids are out walking around town. If the business is open, they can trick-or-treat there, just like they went out.
And trick-or-treating on a Sunday, will we be moving that to, or are we keeping it on Sunday? I guess that's...
We tried changing it once, and then just made two trick-or-treat nights for that.
Gotcha, okay. So let's just, so there's not even a lot of businesses that are open on Sundays either, so.
Yeah.
I remember a lot of people in my neighborhood last year, they basically just set their stuff outside and let the kids come around where they wanted. I mean, we sat in chairs in our front yard while the trick-or-treaters were coming around, but we didn't have any contact with them or anything. We were up by the house, and they grabbed their goodies off the table and kind of out of their business.
Alright.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm for whatever, like, I don't want to create a super spreader.
Okay.
And who knows what October will bring, too. Like, I mean, I think, Michigan has 52 active cases right now, I think, or 50 something.
And last year, it was kind of decided a little late, so people probably didn't know that it was going to be on Facebook, but we're deciding pretty early this year. So this would give us a good time to get it on the website, and get it on Facebook, and get it really, you know, let everybody know that, be watching the Facebook page, because that's where it's going to happen.
So I think that's your answer. Scale back, promote social distancing, and, yeah, try to, you know, just we'll come back strong next year.
I will discuss this with my board and my Halloween Town Committee, and then I will let you guys know what we figure out.
Alright.
Something that, just, just to throw it, just out there, maybe including like the businesses in with the scavenger hunt, maybe they have to go into a, like, just to promote business, you know, to the businesses throughout the time that you're doing it, it might not be a bad idea, just to, you know, maybe, maybe it's, the business will work with you, and, you know, maybe it's throwing something out there, you know, just maybe something like that, that would create some business for the businesses throughout the scavenger hunt. Okay, just an idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks, let us know what you, what you come up with. Alright, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Alrighty, moving on. 5B, discussion and possible action on final pay estimate to Recky Inc. in the amount of $1,854.90 for business 30 storm improvements. Dave, I see you're on. You're good with us making this payment?
Yes, this is just the release of the retainage. The project is complete, and they came in about $5,000 under the awarded amount, mainly due to not having to take as much payment as we had anticipated. So this project is done, we recommend releasing the retainage.
Alrighty.
That never happens, motion to approve.
Yeah.
Also, that's a...
We have a motion. We have a second. I'll do a roll call for this. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Alright. Number 5E, discussion and possible action on improving the city street finance report for fiscal year 21.
This will be Christina had done this, so she'll talk about that.
This is the annual report that we have to do for the Iowa DOT. This is usually due September 30th by the end of the month, but they have now changed that date to December 1st, but we haven't finished already. A lot of towns do. It was pretty straightforward. Our hiccup this year was our bond, because we had actually refinanced the previous one that we had in there into our new bond. So I actually had to work with a wonderful lady up with Iowa DOT who helped me through that and get it done. So you'll see a lot of things there, especially the summary page has a lot on it. Next year will look a little less confusing, but that's what we had to do to play with the numbers to get that bond to work out for us. The next item you'll see is kind of in with this, some transfers that we'll be doing. And you'll see that ending balance underneath the other special revenues will equal out to those transfers that we're going to be doing, to kind of clean this up, so that way some of these numbers get off of our report in the future and don't just hang out there.
Okay. Any questions on that?
This is for the last fiscal year, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, or are we, are we?
Move to approve.
We have a, alright. I have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion, I have a second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
And Nathan, aye? Yeah.
Laser's barking.
Sorry, my dogs are both crazy. I did not know they're barking. My creature?
Go home and get your dog.
Alright. Alright, moving on. 6A, set public hearing for fiscal year 2022, budget amendment number one. You just said this was related to...
Uh, actually, 60 is. I didn't realize what they wrote on there.
60, oh, okay, alright. 60 is, oh, okay, all right.
So this is going to be a budget amendment. This is going to have the American funds, which Anne had talked about. This will be the revenues and the expenditures. If you remember, we added the ambulance director, so we need to have that in there. Some of the insurance, like the Barnes project, that type of stuff is going to need to be in there, revenues and expenditures. As you'll see later on, we got the official award from FEMA for the AFG grant, so that needs to be put in there for the fire department. And then anything over and above what we currently have budgeted for the sports complex will be in there. It's pretty straightforward, there's no real surprises. So, I, I feel comfortable doing this on the 13th. If you feel that I need to be here for that public hearing, we can move it to the 27th of October. But I will be gone on the 13th.
11th. October 11th.
I'm sorry, you're correct, it is the 11th. So if you want to do it on the 11th, I will not be here.
The 25th is?
Nor will I, I will not be here on the 11th either.
I think we better just do it on the 27th.
It's actually the 25th.
25th, either Monday.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to set public hearing for 25th.
Second.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, so October 25th for that. All right, 6B, set public hearing and bid date for Business 30 sidewalk improvements.
Dave? Yes, so as you recall, we had put out any project or bids to do some widening, turn lane and do pavement patching previously. Those bids came in higher than we had hoped, so we are putting this project back out. And in order to do this, we can't just separate the sidewalk and get quotes and do the patches and get quotes even though the threshold would likely to not be exceeded. We admitted previously, we now have to bid each one of these separate. We have the sidewalk improvements up first and we are looking to set the public hearing for September 27th and then receive bids on October 7th. So we'll do the sidewalk project first and then we'll do the patching project.
All righty. Per Dave's recommendation, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for 27th.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 6C, set public hearing and bid date for Business 30 patch repairs. So Dave, same thing?
Same thing, yes, setting the public hearing for September 27th and the bid date for October 7th.
All right, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing date for 27th.
I'll second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, 27th for that as well. Now, 6D, resolution 30-2021, approving transfer of funds. So Christina, this is the?
This is the resolution I was talking about that correlates with the street finance. Those two amounts equal out to that special revenues. It's just, it's funds that were kind of left over in the capital, our capital equipment fund and a special assessment for sidewalks that came in a few years later that somebody finally paid. If we want them off that report, we just got to move them to a fund that we can actually use the money then.
Looks like around a thousand dollars?
Yep.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nathan, aye. All righty. Item 7, correspondences.
Uh, the only thing is there, I put in the award letter from FEMA. Fire department received a grant for turnout gear in the amount of $46,571.43. We must come up with $2,328.57 on our own money for a total of $48,900. And that will give us 22 sets of bunker gear, which is a huge savings for the city.
Awesome, that's awesome.
All right, that's it?
That is it, I just wanted to talk about that.
All right. Moving on, 8A, city engineers report.
Not much new to report, we continue to work on a survey for the water main project that we're attempting to apply for CDVQ funds on. And also continue to push the DNR to try to get the well site survey completed. It appears that they had, had some communication issues on that previously. And assured me that they would be out shortly to try to get that site survey completed. So, we'll work on those and get the bids out for Highway 30.
All right. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
8B, public works director report.
Not a lot here. We've got a, we had our yearly maintenance down there at the plant. We had to send a pump in to give fits, we got our reserve pump in there now. Happens about every other year, we'll have to rebuild one or three. It's about 6,500, I think is what it is, so we'll be, I'll have that for you guys next meeting.
Budget for that already though, don't you?
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's all budgeted month. We took the paint sprayer out to the park to help Park and Recs try to field. There's a learning curve there, but we're talking Drake and stuff, I think we can also save money on paint that way by in bulk, so.
Wow.
We just want to see how feasible it is, we're going to get to the rest of the season and kind of see where we're at with his numbers from four. And how good it looks, I mean, if a kid can get it to look a little bit better, then we'll go back the other way.
Is this, is that the intended use of this equipment as well?
No, that was, well, like, yes and no. We would have had different tires put on it if we were going to go this way, but if we can make it work, I mean.
There's a field paint shortage, so. That was something, we, remember if you talked, we talked about not having yellow paint? We will come across some of that, so you know, that on Highway or Business 30, they, they made a quick.
Very quick.
Very quick line of paint out there just to, so you can still see the lines in the rain and what have you.
I heard it was a little narrower than the existing line, but.
And that's because we didn't, there's no way we had enough paint to cover.
Yeah, okay.
So.
That explains it, that's perfect, okay.
Yeah, so that's basically, as Drayton's having the paint shortage for his too, I mean, it's everywhere. And then the last thing I have is, right now, we're right at 50 stumps we have ground. That puts us about one-fourth of the way done. We got meters to read this week and some other reports we got to get done. So hopefully next week, we can start throwing black dirt in some of the holes that we've got done. And our plan is to, I mean, weather permitting, I mean, we're going to do this as long as it's above freezing. So hopefully this winter, we should be, should be through all our stumps.
Thank you. 8C, parking rec director report.
Soccer and flag football are in full swing right now. Everything's going good, we had our first games for older ages in soccer and flag football last week. Everything went good there and then the younger kids started two weeks ago. Other than that, I'm going to keep you guys posted on Halloween Town and girls' basketball registration will start next Monday. So, and thanks to those guys for, I put in an order for spray paint over a month and a half ago and it's, it hasn't even entered the warehouse yet, so if it wasn't for those guys helping me out, we wouldn't even have fields right now. So I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Drayton. 8D, police department report.
Just wanted to congratulate the South Carolina Base Committee for the, for the event. Police Department's standpoint went great, a lot of staffing, a lot of hours, but very few minor issues from that standpoint. And so, working with the committee and working with the ball field activities and stuff like that, no complaints. It was, it was great activity.
All right, very glad to hear, thank you. Ambulance director report, I see we had a written report in our packet.
Yeah, so that was the one he had sent me that I did not receive and he brought it at the last meeting. The one you have in front of you today is the one he sent me today for tonight's meeting. So I'll just include this into the next packet as well, that way you have a hard copy of it, but it's in front of you, the August one.
Okay.
So you have July and August in front of you.
All right. Good, thank you. 8F, fire chief slash city administrator report.
All right, so I already talked about the grant for the AFG. You saw in the paper last week, the fire department also won a thousand dollar grant, which we received the donation towards an AED or a partial, partial monies for an air pack. That's INT Insurance, it was the community contest award. Basically what that was, was Lisbon Insurance Agency submitted to INT through this award program. And basically, they gave it to us because of the, the Drayshow, assist with the Drayshow cleanup and due to the takeout night for COVID, we did those community take, takeout nights for delivery, so. I can't recall the total number, I want to say they gave 62 awards that ranged from $250 to $1,000. And this is like Midwest region, and so we were able to get one of the $1,000 ones, so.
Nice.
Pretty nice thing, and like I said, we're going to put that probably towards an AED. But we'll leave it to do that or an air pack, so. We had the pancake breakfast, served approximately 1,050 people, so it was a huge success. The turnout, I would say, was down about 200 or so. We were able to get to tables, you know, they probably weren't the six-feet distance, but they were spread out enough that I think it worked out well. Had a lot of compliments on, from the public that, the ones that were masked and that weren't masked that really appreciated the fact that we had the event and they missed it. And we raised nearly $11,000 profit, so this year, we had a lot of donations from businesses in the area. And the first customer that walked through was profit for us. And that's, at least all the years I've been on, that's not been done before, so wow. Kudos to everybody. Travis and city crew also helped facilitate getting our ice machine up and running and making a cord for the trailer. So, thanks to them for assisting there as well.
Awesome.
City administrator report, as you see downtown, Bi-State Masonry is here. I've started work on the history center and the library. I reached out to the guy today, it sounded like they're about halfway done, they're cutting out the bricks right now at the library. And then, he's going to give me a timeline officially for the history center. I know they have an event coming up, is it October 9th, John? I think they have some open house or something going on that, but I'll reach out to them to make sure everything's good for that. Talks about the workshop, I would also like to add just discussion on the ball field lights over at the park and as well as the sports complex, so I'll be adding that to this, to the workshop as well to discuss those two things. We'll be working on the TIF in the end of the year, your financial report. We did send the financial report that's pretty much done off to the auditor to just make sure everything's kosher there, so. Other than that.
Thank you. 8G, council and mayor reports. That's out, so we won't be receiving one of those. Council report, Sarah, you want to start?
Sure, I'll start. I really don't have a lot, I guess. Just thank you for all you guys are doing, police department, Parks Rec, fire department, public works, city administrator, city staff, just keep being you and keep doing what you're doing because I think things are going well.
Well said.
And thanks to the other council members and you for doing what you do. But congratulations, that's a huge thing for the fire department to approach customer, gain profit, that's amazing. For a nonprofit organization, that's, it's nice to hear.
John, ready?
Thanks to everyone that's helped save the city money, that, that's commendable. A lot of people think it isn't my money, they don't worry about it. I have one question on the library in particular, do we have any advice on sealing those bricks after it's done? Because I know they did that years ago, but it's probably 10 years since that's, they've been resealed.
Anne, are you still on there? I know that they are doing a, some tough point work in there, but I can. Anne, do you recall in the library, the phase where they were going to seal the bricks at all?
I could look at my file and clarify this for you, but it's my understanding that once they replace the bricks that are deteriorated and have been removed, they will be putting some sort of a sealant on that entire wall. And I can clarify that with Brandon in an email later tonight, but I believe that was part of that original bid.
I recall seeing it as well, and I had the same.
Because we, yeah, we simply can't leave that new brick exposed.
Right.
It just says, it does say, remove existing joint material in wall coping and reseal the weather type condition utilizing polyurethane sealant. I don't know if that's on what they're repairing or if that's all of it, but I think we'll double check with them as well. Thank you.
All right. Council report, I don't have anything new, but, but yeah, this was a pretty amazing meeting tonight. I think with reports about $46,000 grant won for the fire department, profit from the pancake breakfast, Travis saving us $77 bucks for lots of, $100, $2,200 bucks, but holding off on that, what was it, the sampler? So yeah, I look forward to next, next Monday's meeting and we'll see what we can do with these barns. But otherwise, that's it, I don't have anything else. Stephanie?
I don't have anything different.
Okay. All right, anything else, anyone? All righty, meeting adjourned.